March 28, 2022 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, folks. We're going to start off with the Pledge Allegiance. Mr. Bridges, could you lead us off on the Pledge Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, good luck, United States, One Nation.
Liberty and Justice.
Thank you. This is public comment. If anyone in the audience has anything they'd like to say, just state your name.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, we lost a member that served this town, Earl Murphy, who was a leader in getting, bringing sewers to the town south of, and served down a sewer implementation. Implementation minute. Could I please ask for a moment of silence for Earl Murphy? Thank you.
All right. So first up would be public comment. Anyone in the audience, please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Ma.
Cindy Marshall, 45, Osceola Road. Conversations with Town Platter, Mr. Goddard from Rhino, which I'm sure everybody's aware of. And I don't know if anyone has done any research on this particular company. But on 2000 OJ, they reached a settlement with Ferrogas Incorporated, DDA, with Rhino, on September 1020, for $740,000 because they were in violation due to an explosion on July 29, 2013, at their refurbishing plant, distribution center in Tewahara, Florida. That caused $0.5 million damage and personal injuries. So that's all the research so far. They've been cited by, I don't know if it's cited. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Deborah Hare, Three Shore Road.
We're headed in that direction. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom, feel free to speak up.
Deb Hare, Three Shore Road.
Deb, it's on the yellow wall, your hand on the yellow background. Sorry, go right ahead.
Okay. I'm just wondering if in old business, you're going to talk about-
Hang on one second, Deborah.
Okay.
One second, Deb. Go ahead, try. Go ahead, Deb, can you speak?
Oh, I can.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just wondering if under old business, you're going to talk about Krabby's at all, or if we should bring it up now?
I don't think I saw it under old business. I know the gentleman's coming in about some parking spots that we're just going to generally discuss at 6:20, it looks like. But I don't think we're here to discuss it other than that. So if there's something you want to say, go right ahead and say it.
Okay, um, as an individual, as well as a part of LMC, we're hoping the Select Board supports the appeal of the Planning Board decision to approve a special permit with a marina, and also as it concerns parking, which will be brought up later.
Seeing appeal here, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? First up, acknowledged payable warrant-
Hold on a second. Sorry, I think Mr. Grinnell is speaking, but we've been here. Mr. Grinnell, are we trying to make a public comment?
You're muted. You're muted, sir.
Okay, I guess I was muted.
Yeah.
Yeah. I said, besides the parking issue, there's also the 150-foot-long docks that protrude into the area where people go through from Middle Pond to South Pond through that culvert. And it's in the, where people have to kind of hover to wait their turn. And also when they come through, how to, they have to clear.
That's it?
That's it for now, until you go to the parking.
Understood. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Sorry, 6:05, beautiful. So acknowledged payable warrant 2221B dated 3/21/22 in the amount of $265,304.73. I need a motion for open session minutes dated 3/21/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul, second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Executive session minutes dated 3/21/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul, a second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Then we have the open session minutes for a budget work session 3/5/2022.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul, a second the motion.
Up in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
All right, 6:05. Appointments, and then we've been so tonight I believe we're going to hear some folks that are interested in some of these boards. And I don't know if we're making the decisions tonight or the following meeting at this point. Up first, should we go with, with it written this way, on this? You had it in your, from here? As a follow-up, I got Cable Advisory Committee, Ad-Hoc Committee, one-year appointment.
Sure.
Okay. And there's the chairman here for the Cable Advisor?
He is.
And your name for the-
Cable Advisor.
Thank you, Paul. And I have here Thomas Benson. Okay. How are you this evening?
Good.
So basically, we had you come in so you could tell us all about yourself and why you would love to be on that, that committee. A little louder for the-
Hearing of the opportunity to participate on the board, able future.
Have you been on any other boards or committees in town?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thanks for stepping up. We appreciate it. Sir, do you have any questions for?
I know, I'm muted at length, and I think you could issue.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Conley, I spoke, and you told me that it reached out to this gentleman. And I think they need a member, they need a member right away because we're going to be going to a, a hearing. Yeah, that's required by law. So if, if there's, I'll wait until Mr. Mogul, and you have your time to discuss, but I'm willing to make a motion tonight. Okay, Mr. Mogul?
No objection, I'll second the motion.
I'm just thrilled, but we got someone actually come on board that hasn't been on anything. So thank you for your, for your patience, you're about to learn new app. So Mogul with Merton, seconded. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Welcome aboard, sir. Thank you.
Maybe the chairman can go over all the ground rules here, getting sworn in.
Yeah. Thank you. Next on my paperwork, I have High-Speed Internet Committee, Ad-Hoc Committee, a one-year appointment. Just talk to each one individually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So first I have Bob Boyd. Sir, how are you today?
Pretty good, everybody.
Wonderful. So yourself, I guess.
IT manager at Opus Five-Town Service, makes loud.
Oh, boy. Wonderful. Committee or board you've been on? Wonderful. And is the Ad-Hoc Committee Chairman here tonight, or are you?
He is.
Yes, wonderful. Do you have any questions for the young man?
I know, I've read his resume that he had and I had no questions.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, he's got an excellent resume. Thank you for applying.
Thank you. Next I have Dave LeBumbard, who cannot make it tonight?
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. David, unmute yourself.
I am here, gentlemen.
Wonderful. So why would you like to be on this committee?
Well, I, I think with the, with all the new technology that's coming down the alley with internet and things like that, I think it, it's something that Southic is definitely going to have to get involved with at some point in time. And I, I would like to be a part of that in getting that going.
Wonderful. Mr. Fox, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I know Mr. LeBumbard, he's an excellent candidate. He also serves as our part-time dispatcher, so he's certainly aware of communications. So excellent in, another excellent candidate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're awesome. I'm having a hard time calling him Dave.
I know.
So I, I've spoken to Dave extensively on this and a couple other things that he's gone out for, so I, I fully support this.
Okay.
I've been called a lot first to Dave, so I can take it.
Wasn't going to say it, I don't know if that's a formal nickname, we ever call you that, but I don't, I don't.
David, yes. All right. Thank you for your time, David.
Thank you.
You can mute yourself and stand by. Ian Criswell. Sir, how are you today?
Doing well, how's yourself?
Wonderful. How do you do here?
I'm Ian Criswell, Southern Fenton Drive. Grew up here in town. I'm a software designer. Worked for a company out of Chicago, used to own a business here in town, sold it. So I'm a remote employee. I would benefit greatly from flying. So when I, I started talking pretty close up on Facebook, looking for volunteers. I've served the town as, and the years back, I figured I'd offer all my assistance and see if there's something I can help with.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Another very qualified candidate. I've known Ian for quite a few years now. I remember him serving on Economic Development Commission, did a good job there. So I think another good candidate.
What year did you graduate, sir?
1987.
Was that the best year ever, or was it yours?
I just- Just for clear, just clarification, it was 1975.
Oh, I was 75, 78. All right, I got screwed up. All right. Sir, do you have any questions?
87 is almost as good as 86. No, I know Ian very well, and no, I have no real questions.
I know him, yeah.
He's a good guy.
He's helped me out tremendously also, like-
Next one's a troublemaker.
Thank you, Ian. The next up I have Jess Bishop. She on Zoom?
At least she's not driving.
Good, oh, no, no, no. Good evening.
Good evening. So yourself.
How's everybody doing?
Wonderful, wonderful.
All right, let me, let me pull over, be a responsible human being here.
You are driving.
Yeah. I was driving. I am no longer driving.
Thank you, thank you.
But this is a case in point for the, this is the case in point for why these technology things are, you know, moving in such a rapid pace right now. As a person who works in the emergency services, the entire system functions on high-speed internet from every single part of our daily job, pretty much, starts on the internet and ends on the internet. So it's, you know, really important that I think we get to this point where we can have a good, effective, fast internet without the monopoly of Comcast, which I know I'm not the only person who feels that way. It's a great group of people that have already spoken. I feel a little under, underevaluated because it's definitely simple with more experience, but I do feel that it's an important thing that we really need to focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Another very good candidate, and I would, I would say to Jessica, I think it's good on committees to be well-rounded. I think we learned in the past when Southwood first computerized, we had all just experts on there, and we made a very serious mistake. They could run the computers, but our staff couldn't. So I think it's good to have someone with, that isn't so tech-savvy to round out a committee. So I think that'd be a good candidate.
Doug?
No, no objection. I've known Jess for a long, long time, and she's a good egg.
Okay. Thank you, Jess. And then up next?
I want to just apologize real quick. I, I see Mr. Giger is on the phone.
Oh, good, because we tried in vain.
Correct. So I don't want to throw him on the spot unless he wants to be thrown on the spot, but Jason, are you on the line here?
I am.
How are you, sir?
I am good.
Ready to speak tonight?
I am ready to speak tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I have your name on this committee, and you're interested in it?
I absolutely am. My name's Jason Giger from 10 Cedar Street. I, I ran a web hosting company for 22 years, and we had to set up networking. And I know how to repair computers. People come to me to have their computers repaired from time to time. Not really certified in my background, but I am definitely interested in this. I've never been on another board.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Sounds like another good candidate. Mr. Mogul?
Also, I, I talked to Jason a few times about this. Last time, I think, was at Mobile, when I, I guess. I just want to draw attention to the board. We have existing, four existing members. There's five that are on the list.
Yep.
One of them is, has submitted a letter of resignation. That's Alicia Sullivan.
Okay.
Alicia just had a baby a few months ago, and with work and commitments, she is not going to continue to serve. So that would be, if we appointed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Yep.
And four that are on the board, including myself, that would give you a board of nine, which would mean you would need five folks to show up to have a meeting, which I don't think is burdensome. I just want to let, I just would, you know, kind of caution. I know Chris Boyd was at about every meeting previous, and Ms. Quinlan and Mr. Johnson were at about every meeting that we had previous.
Yep.
But, you know, for Bob and Dave and Ian and Jess, and, and Mr. Giger, I just, we'll just let them know that it's kind of important that when we schedule a meeting, that we, we have attendance so that we can have a meeting, because if we don't have half plus one, the board, we can't meet. So as the boards, boards get larger, it becomes problematic to maintain a forum. That's my only concern. But I think that this is a fine group of individuals that could do some good stuff here. So.
And, and- Go ahead.
What night do you guys meet on?
We haven't even picked that yet, so we can kind of figure that out. If there's a good night that works for most. We will be meeting hybrid. Not if, if you're working the desk, you can't join the, the meeting because there's more pressing stuff. But obviously, we can work around a schedule.
Okay.
People's schedules, I know, you know, Jessica, same thing, right? We are going to meet in a hybrid manner, so if you're able to join, you know, if you're, if you need to join remotely, we can have that. But we'll also meet here at Town Hall.
All right, thank you very much.
Welcome, David.
And I think the biggest thing is if you can't, if you really don't like it and you're not hitting the meetings, just resign.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't, don't torture the rest of the board by waiting months on end and not showing up. I mean, just cut it and, and be done with it. We won't be upset. So would you guys like to appoint these folks tonight?
I think we have a good group here. I, I'd like to make a motion to approve these five individuals.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Doug will be reaching out to you guys and letting you know a, a schedule of sorts, and go from there. Thank you.
Is Carl still here? Carl? Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
These, these appointments are a little out of our normal annual cycle. So I forgot to ask, are these going to be up for reappointment in June? Or are these now one-year appointments that, from effective when they get sworn in, or tomorrow for a year?
We would have to, we'd have to clarify that with the town clerk, although you see if, right now, they'd probably go to June 30th, but you could-
I just be clear on that for everybody.
If you understand it, yeah, Ad-Hoc boards are only one-year appointments. And generally, you want to be on, you want to be co-terminist for a year.
Let's, that's my, thank you for letting me lead you along. So that's my suggestion, is that these appointments are until 6:30, and then we will, as part of the annual reappointment process that we are going to undertake, we will reappoint these people as well.
Okay.
As part of, and that way we don't end up having appointments at weird times of the year.
Yep.
And then having to deal with that.
All right. So any objection?
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Let's, so I'm going to read these names off and read off the current ones that are on there too, so we have everything. All right, so it's Bob Boyd, Dave LeBumbard, Ian Criswell, Jess Bishop, and Jason, I don't even want to say your last name.
Giger.
Giger, okay.
He showed me three times now, I could think of it. Did I get it right?
Then, and then the ones that are currently on?
No, you didn't get it right.
Jesus, I should have done it a fourth time. How do you pronounce your last name, Jason?
It's Giger. Giger.
Still appointed. So, and then remaining on the board is Chris Boyd, no relation.
That's funny, yeah.
Marlene Quinlan.
Yeah.
And James Johnson.
Wonderful.
I did check.
Yep.
No relation.
All right, so next up I have Ag Agriculture, Agriculture Commission is up next, and I believe he is on the line. Well, is he the chairman? No, okay, so I'm going to go with Bert first, because he's the chairman.
Sage is on.
I know, Sage is running back and forth here, he's all excited. So Bert, you're chairman, so that's why I wonder, point you off first and say hello, Bert. Hi, Joe, how are you? Good, Bert, good. I'm glad you could make it. All right, so I have just Sage Fury. That's it?
Well, there's-
Yeah, I could, I could say while, while Sage is, is joining, I think, I think Select Board members know that he's very interested in getting on the Agriculture Commission for some time now. I think for the past maybe year, he's come to every single meeting. Not mentioning Planning Board and Conservation Meetings. It's been helpful to us in identifying resources. Does that help our work? So, you know, in terms of, you know, enthusiasm or, you know, having a heart for it, he's, he's definitely there.
Thank you.
Now, we had a letter from the chairman on, I swear I did, anyway, and the letter was that there was a request to appoint an associate member to be a member, and then to appoint Mr. Fury as an associate member. Mr. Hanson, do I have that correct?
Yes, right. We would, if possible, like to have, we have an alternate member now, Brett Colson, who has been on for a couple of years. We do have an opening for a full commissioner. So if Brett could become the full commissioner, and then Sage become an alternate, that would be awesome.
So Sage, so yourself, I mean, I know you've been every meeting, but we got to give you your three minutes.
Sage Fury, I know, but this day I want to join the ad county because I'm very interested in trying to get agriculture back into the town, since we're losing a lot of people who are, who are missing out of spec. I want to try and see if we can find programs, find ideas to get our kids, right, into the culture and try to refine. On top of this, I have graphic skills and social media skills and a whole bunch of researching. For a big vacation in the town, which will also help them as well with advertising all the nice stuff that we found for farmers to be going to, to save their lands for this training. Or just, just the little stuff that I want to help in my audience.
Thank you. Mr. Fox, do you have any questions?
No, I think it'd be good, you know, to move Mr. Colson up and say, John, it's associate. I just want to get clarification on the timetable, you know, that's, so before we make a motion, I just want clarification. I believe the associate would be till June 30th, but what would be Mr. Colson's term?
Two years?
That's what I don't-
There's an ass- well.
I'm looking at it, and I'm not quite sure. I want to give-
I know, I don't need a headache.
Right, I-
We can put this one off till next week.
Absolutely.
Just so we can do that. So Bert, we just want to make sure we do it correctly as far as who gets what for the years. So we'll, we'll figure that out, and we will put them on for next week. I don't see any issues, David. We just want to do it right.
There is a-
Understood, yeah, thank you.
Correct.
And you're fine with that, Sage? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Did you have any questions for Sage?
No, I've spoken to Sage extensively.
All right, so we will deal with Ag next week, put that one back on. Historic Commission I have next, and there's, you know, from Historic Law, that would be-
Mr. Hamer?
The Amber. All right. How about Linda McQuaid?
Linda is here. She's all the way to the back room.
I'm sorry. Hi, Linda, how are you there? Come on up. In that committee, come on up, yeah, we can't hear you back there. Oh, yeah, absolutely. New to town, just finished college, go ahead.
When I first moved here in 1975, I joined the Historical Society because I wanted to learn about Southwood and get involved with, when, you know, kids and work, kind of took that away. But I also spent seven years on the Finance Committee. I'm from municipal government for 32 years, I can now retire. I worked the elections. But this is full circle, going back to the history. That's all.
I've known Linda since 1975. You know, which reminds me of the greatest class I ever graduated from Southwood High School. But no, I think she would be a tremendous asset to that committee. It, it needs more members, and Linda served on the 250th with you and myself. You know, so she's, she's a worker, so excellent candidate.
Mr. Mogul?
Where are you originally from?
West Southland.
I was just asking.
The last verbage, yeah.
No, ours, yeah. Eastern part of the state, Franklin.
Fair enough.
Two towns over from me, the pictures.
I know exactly where it is. I used to go there once a week.
Okay. All right, wonderful.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In this particular one, I would make a recommendation if there was a motion to be made by the vice chair to fill the unexpired term of Eric Davidson, who has resigned, which would then put this on a track to put us on our regular appointment schedule for the end of-
Correct. And I would gladly make that motion.
And I would gladly second it.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay. All right, Conservation-
There's nothing to do there, that's for, somebody submitted a letter of interest a little ahead of the game.
Okay. So that cleans that up for now, while- So that cleans that up for now. Other than next week we'll figure out Ag and do that appointment.
Yeah, we'll just have to straighten it out when, what those are and how the, how the term expires.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, folks.
Now's your chance to get on your, not soapbox, but while you have the podium, you say, look, we're still looking for people to come out. We have various positions on boards and commissions that are open. And that, you know, as we get into the appointment cycle for next year, the same thing.
Yep.
Right? Glad to see a couple of, you've not served on a border commission in our town before, Mr. Boyd. Fantastic. Mr. Preswell, you have, welcome back. Um, you know, so it's great. And Mr. Bengston also said he had not served on a border commission. High-speed internet sub until we just made these appointments, none of those people that were on that sub previous had served on a border commission prior to their joining that sub. So I think it's good to bring new people in. Sage, I don't think you've been officially on a border commission. Jason, same thing. I think it's great.
Okay, thank you. All right, six twenty I have. Kenneth Eagleson. Update on one forty-one Congamond Road parking.
You can bring a chair down to.
Come on up, sir. Yeah.
Just grab a chair next to you there and take it with you.
Thanks, Pat.
Absolutely.
First, uh, thank you for allowing me to commit this evening to speak, um, on such short notice. I never knew that I was going to need to do this.
You're learning a lot, I would imagine.
I'm, I'm learning a great deal about the town of Southwood and the many different boards that exist separately from one another. I, well, because, because I just said that, let me say that I thought that back on February first, when Arlovec Associates gave to the town of Southwood Planning Board, a special permit amendment request, site plan approval submission, that it was inclusive of all that was going to be discussed through through meetings.
Right.
Uh, we were. Site plan approval. That being said, um, um, my name again is Ken Eagleson. One forty-one Congamond Road is the property that I own. I live in four oh five fourth Mountain Road in West Southland, Connecticut, a stone's throw from the restaurant.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and I'm here to find out how do I proceed to receive an approval from the town of Southwood to park ten cars within the public right of way on Congamond Road, a temporary, non-exclusive easement. Cause I'm not getting same answer from each and every department of people that I speak with, as far back into the back, who said, I don't know, to the point where the woman that I've been talking to for almost a year now resigned from Arlovec Associates today. But whatever. Um, also I'm told that I need to get an approval for a order mechanism, be it a, a wall of some sort, uh, between the parking lot and Beach Road easement area, which happens to be on my property according to the GIS.
Sure.
Property thing that technically I own Beach Road, but nobody seems to want to give me anything for that. Um, it, it, it's stated in the decision that, I hope you all have copies of that, the stuff that I submitted to, um, to Robin's office, her office that Robin is in.
Okay.
Um, it's stated in there that the planning board believes that the use of this easement will benefit the town. I understand that this would be a temporary easement until such time as the town may need to utilize it to open up any other right of way. I'm willing to, as my corporation, to accept any liability that goes along with the town property easement. Adding the town to Southwood as an additional insured on my insurance policy at whatever liability level is the town feels appropriate. I, and those are really what I need. Just a couple of other things. It was my understanding that I was looking for an amendment of a special permit that had already been given and recorded to a previous person who went before the planning board. His plan was approved and that plan allowed for him to have parking spaces in this easement area. Why, why a year and a half later, all of a sudden I'm sitting here again, confuses me. I thought that it had already been done and I was looking for the planning board to say, yes, approved before, it's recorded and, um, yes, it's part of our decision that, that we're giving you those two temporarily use. I will say that a gentleman named Randy Brown had put into some paperwork, um, letter of some sort saying that I would need to get in an easement or something of that nature, nature. And I thought that that's what we were working on at the town planning board meetings.
Right.
I thought that that was all being done. Um, Arlovec Associates. The individual who's now resigned said that she thought the same thing. However, she's an office person. I understand that an attorney, but an office person, not people that were really in the actual meetings. That's, I'm looking for the direction. What do I do next? Um, I, I've heard many different ways of getting there.
Right.
Um, of course, the, the worst scenario would be to go before a town meeting, I guess, and have a town take a vote. Um, that sounds quite a bit extreme. Really already been approved. Uh, many people had, you know, chances to object during all the town meetings. Or I guess I'm just hoping for the straight line directions to go.
Understood. And that's why we, we had you come in tonight and talk to us. We will have Carl reach out to our attorneys and, and figure out what the procedure really is. To get a, an answer from someone other than the local boards and commissions that you've already talked to. I don't ever recall that we approved that parking lot for the, the other time that, um.
The plan, well.
The planning.
My understanding is that the, the special permit that was filed for this is a modification of a special permit.
Right.
So I'd have to go back and review what the original special permit that that's the basis of.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, um, and I'll let the, the lawyers need to chime in here and just, it is interesting to me that, um, from what we've seen, I did sit through some of these hearings at the planning board because they were coinciding with other activities on the planning board.
Yep.
Um, it is novel to have parking that's not on the property subject to the special permit included in the parking calculation for the special permit.
Right.
That stuck out all along. It was, it was a topic of discussion the whole way. And I think something needs to be resolved in that regard. And then, you know, Mr. Eagleson, just from a, you know, a practical point of view, let the, the lawyers weigh in from here is, you know, what is, that the select board doesn't have the right such as it is to, to grant an easement on town property. We can't convey town property as the executive branch of government. Only the legislative branch of government, which is town meeting can, can do that, right? So if we enter into a, for example, if we enter into a lease agreement with someone or need permission of town meeting to enter into that lease in the first place. So that's why that discussion of town meeting is coming. But I have no idea whether what you're looking to do can, can be, can be done, can be done by license, can be done by lease. I don't know. And I don't even know, I'd have to look at the surveys and the lawyers will look at the surveys to understand if it's town property, it may very well belong to the Commonwealth. And then that's a whole different thing too. I don't know.
Um, I think as part of what I submitted.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that easement from Arlovec showing? And, um, it seemed, I don't know. Time could help, but when I first got involved with this, I was told that it was state owned because it's a state highway. Congamond Road is a state. Asked the question to you, why didn't the, then why didn't the state, when you were paving the whole road and putting sidewalks down the whole road, why didn't they continue the sideways, sidewalks right to the end of the town? End of the state, onto the bridge, on this, on this easement. I never got a real answer other than, well, it's really town property. It can't be both, I don't know. The people who did the work, the people who did the work on that entire road destroyed that parking lot at that property. They dumped all kinds of stuff over the embankment, literally on top of a stairway that used to be there was covered. They destroyed a, a chain link fence. And yet, nobody did anything about it. The townspeople moved, you know, make them responsible. I think that had to do with the previous owner.
Yeah, so don't, yeah, don't throw that on us. I mean, I wasn't aware of a fence. I wasn't aware of steps. I hear you loud and clear, but just be careful where you throw that. But I, I, I'm with you. I understand that there was probably a deal with the past owner and with the state to use that as a yard. I think there was a ton of stuff in that yard at one point. And you lived down there, so you saw more than I did.
I saw a lot. I'm driving by it all the time.
Yep.
But, I mean, myself and several of the neighbors around there have identified the, the destruction that they did when they were there and, uh, whatever.
Understood.
But it's, um, you know, it's, what I'm saying or feeling is that I'm not asking for something new. Um, and I that it's a site plan amended. It's, it's a special permit amendment. We're not looking for you to revote on something that apparently had already been voted on or, or at least given to the property already for temporarily.
Yeah, and I don't know how that, how that happened, but that's what the lawyer will figure out and tell us yes or no and how to do it or not do it or what we can do. Absolutely.
I do understand that if it goes to the town meeting thing, then I need to act pretty quickly because in order to I have to do some kind of, um.
You have seven days or less, which, which wouldn't happen quite honestly. You don't, I'm sure my lawyer is not going to get back to us like that.
Not by Thursday, right?
I doubt it. He's got a stack of stuff. He still has gotten back to us, huh?
Right.
Nothing personal if you're listening.
But I don't, I hate to lose a year.
Right.
I've already lost a year.
Right. I understand.
Get me more in the planning board and three months, well, two months actually. Three if you got me informed meetings.
Yep.
I'm, I know that there was a gentleman who spoke earlier. If I could just reply to him and show you something.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't know what authority anybody has, but just to, just to look at this plan.
Depends on who you ask.
Right. What you're looking at there.
Yeah.
Is a drawing of existing restaurant.
Yep.
Proposed docks.
Yep.
Covered right here. Hundred eleven feet away from any docking. And note that the old docking used to go right out same distance.
Right. There's no one there.
That, that's, no, I, that's, um.
Whenever they took that picture.
Something whatever out of the sky.
Yeah.
It could be underwater, who knows?
Okay.
But it's more than, more than enough distance away. I'd like to leave you with this copy if you want, copy for your records.
Thank you.
It's, um, the, uh, at the town planning meeting, the harbor master, Super Police, Donkey.
Yes.
Yes, I did. Attended the meeting and thought that this covered situation is not allowed. That he's responsible for waterways and felt that this was more than, more than adequate. You couldn't speak to the party.
Mr. Chairman, so I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people the last couple of weeks on this issue. And I, I, I'll reiterate to you what I've told Mr. Goddard, Mr. Dowdery, uh, Mr. Grinnells and about anybody else who listens to me. I'm a big believer in swim lanes. So as a board, we have no standing as far as the dock, right? The select board. That, you know, the lake management committee, um, presented their, their opinion and their thought process around that to the planning board, which was the permit granting authority for the special permit for the property. What's the number again? One four?
One forty-one.
One forty. I always call it Krabby Joe's, but I don't like to call it that. One forty-one, right? And much like conservation is going to have a process that someone's going to have to go through as part of the chapter ninety-one licensing process. And then you're probably going to have to go in front of the state as part of the chapter ninety-one process and all the hearing process. And lake management, for example, is going to have standing to, to present an argument for or against whatever is their purview as a board to vote and go and present. But I, I've been a big proponent of this the whole time. And so I, I, I want to just be clear on your earlier comment about, well, when I was in front of the planning board that I thought I was doing everything. Well, I just want to be, we've been very big and very active in telling boards and commissions, you know, to be very focused on the task at hand and be the experts at what it is that you do. So the planning board is your land use board. Conservation is your wetlands and conservation issue. And, you know, lake management is an ad hoc advisory board to this board that advises us on, on all kinds of lake issues with lake treatments and docks and marinas and, and anything else to do with the lake. And we learned all about weird gates and all kinds of stuff like that, right? Um, and so we highly value their opinion and their, their way to present their thought process and their opinions is to come in front of the board that has the statutory authority at, at any given point. So they, they're going to, they, they presented in front of the planning board. The planning board took the facts and, and their, their opinions into the total preponderance of the evidence and presented their, their findings as part of a special permit that they grant, a special permit modification that they granted. Um, the same thing's going to happen when you go in front of conservation as part of the chapter ninety-one license process, I believe. And I believe, I don't even know what's the process. That's how out of the lane I am on that. Whatever that process is, you're going to probably end up in front of conservation and, and/or if it's just in front of the state, then you'll end up, you know, lake management or anyone has the right to, to testify or present evidence of why it should or shouldn't be allowed. But I just want to be clear from where I sit, you know, the, the select board is going to be the one, if, if our role to play is probably to be a signatory to if there is an, if there is a way that's palatable for the townspeople and the town to, to, to lease, license, do something with those spots. The only other thing I'll say on this, and I talked to, uh, I said, Mr. Grinnells, Mr. Goddard, um, on, on this issue is I don't think anybody wants to see Krabby Joe's continue to be a vacant building down there at the edge of our town. You know, it looks like crap now. I think it's going to, it's going to look way better when it's open and functioning as a vibrant business. I think everybody in the end wants that. The Marina piece, well, that's up for, up for debate whether some want it, some don't want it. I'm personally, I'm not informed enough to make a decision. And I think the planning board's done a great job as far as hearing the land use aspect of it. Um, and then there's going to be a spirited debate on, on the rest of it. Um, but I, I, I'm certain that I think everyone that I've heard so far, um, even through the public hearing process of the people that live on Beach Road would like to see that, that place put to use. There's concern about crowding and vehicles and everything else, and that comes with every development, right? But I, I, and those need to be addressed and they are addressed somewhat in, in, and I believe adequately in the, in the special permit. But, um, I think everyone wants to see this property put to use. We just, everyone's, it's just the nature of, somewhat the nature of government, you know, of, as that we, we're trying to have all, everyone's trying to do their best and stay in their lane and do their job. And, um, you know, I hope that you can understand that part of the process.
I'm learning it. Do I understand it? No. I don't understand why every board is so narrow outside of their own, whatever. I don't get it. But I'll learn. I'll figure it out. I just wish I was here nine months ago, ten months ago, finding out that it was so different.
Well, I mean, I, in, in all honesty, I think we've done it, you know, we've done a better job of, of coordination amongst boards. Mr. Goddard's been a key cog in that wheel, if you will, as far as bridging boards and commissions. But it's also very important, I think, for those boards to be able to act independently on their area of expertise. From an applicant perspective, can we do a better job of helping coordinate that when someone comes in and says, oh yeah, you need to do this, 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 and this, and this is the process? Absolutely. And that's a continued process that we're, journey that we're on.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that those responsibilities lie within the townspeople. I hired a gentleman.
Point taken.
Arlovec.
Point taken.
Who, when I got the decision, I was blindsided by condition, 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 condition. We, all those conditions that I've been working on in the background behind it, you know? We've got all those conditions that have been working on in the background behind it, you know? Because there's deadlines, of course. Almost everybody's like.
Carl, anything we missed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it, it is possible to have Attorney Beglane look all of these documents over along with the request by Mr. Eagleson through attorney, which was a cover letter to this, so that he could review what, um, is possible and what the time, the steps would be and what those timeframes would be, sir.
Okay. So our attorney will adopt it as a term.
Okay, um, knowing that it may end up before the town planning meet or town meeting.
Yep.
Maybe weren't, anything I should be filling out before April first? Or should I just talk to the attorneys and get them working on?
If, if, if it was to happen that quickly, our attorney would write that draft anyways. There's nothing you and I can write to, to, you know what I mean? That all comes from the attorney's end. And if it doesn't make it on this one, I don't know how I say this. I'll say rumor has it that we may have another town meeting before next year, depending on if some properties come up and if some other things get worked out in town. You may see another town meeting. So you may not have to wait a whole year. Not, not that you want to hear that, but.
The year is like Memorial Day to, that's September first, that's the year.
I understand completely. My permits only took three years, so. My permits for my business only took three years. So you're way ahead. Sir, do you have anything?
No, I, I think Doug did an excellent job explaining the situation. We're, we're just in a time thing right now. And I don't know whose fault it is. Maybe it's a combination. But, uh, we don't have the authority to give them easement. That's the bottom line. And that's what the attorney is going to tell us. Uh, and that has to go to the voters. Yeah, I, I don't, I, I think I spoke to you on the phone. I'm not optimistic that that can be done in four days. Um, and I feel bad because we are pro-business. We want to see that opened up. Want to see something going on there. I know there's some debate on, some people do want the marina, some people don't want the marina. Um, but that's, that's for the, uh, really for the voters to decide, I guess. But that's, uh, we have the purest form of government. And that's what you're dealing with. It's up to the voters to make these kind of decisions. It's not like a city where you can go in and talk to the city council or the mayor and they take those actions. We have an annual meeting. Occasionally we have a special town meeting, but that's very rare. But, uh, so I, 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 I feel for you as, as a business person. But, uh, I think Doug hid, hid cylinders. Uh, that's the situation you're facing.
But it is really over ten parking spots, not your whole parking lot.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The easement part is.
The easement part, right.
However, until that is settled.
Right.
We can't even apply for chapter ninety-one license.
Gotcha.
Which affects even putting what we call transient docks in the water.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not allowed to put any dock in the water, which means that I can't even service the entire lake community
Right.
to come to the restaurant.
Until that is decided.
Summertime, biggest time.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Off the lake, probably thirty, forty percent of the business.
Right.
So it's, we're set up to fail right away through the summer. If we open up, you know, May, June, whatever.
Right.
We're set up to fail because we're, we're just going to be dealing with people coming off the road. Instead of, it's a lakefront property. That's.
Understood.
I mean, that, chapter ninety-one, some people say, why didn't I apply four to six months ago? Some way, some say you can until you resolve your situation with the planning board.
I, I listened to that and that was quite the chicken and egg situation. Eventually you got to put a stake in the ground, right? I, I, I don't know the answer to that to this day, right? Find out what was the right answer eventually, right? But, um.
Well, well, I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, eventually.
Well, nine, nine months ago, I had an informal meeting with the DEP and they said, get your application right now.
For chapter ninety-one.
Chapter ninety-one. Get it in right now. Get, let us get started on it working now. And, uh, Mr. Vivek said, we'll do that. Never did.
So there's nothing stopping you not from doing it? Other than the hearsay of maybe or maybe not?
I don't know who to go to to do it because he's the guy I hired to do it. I think he won't do it.
Oh, gotcha.
Although I, when I'm after, I would say Wednesday, on Wednesday after.
Right.
There's something going on in court tomorrow that will affect the bridge.
Understood. Carl Motocross, that, that was a special permit also, right? Because that's the land that's leased to them from the town or from the?
No, that is, that, that's just a license, one year, one year incremental licenses. So duration issue, that's a long-term, um, a long-term arrangement, which would require a, an easement issue voted through a town meeting. So.
Would I be able to start with one of your licenses?
The, the lawyers will tell us, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's what Mark, you know, Attorney Beglane will tell us what our options are.
Yeah, they'll print it right out for us, which direction we should go in. If that's available, then they'll tell us for sure. Does he handle that one for the motocross back in the day? So, same attorney.
And we won.
On your dime. We'll speak to him on our dime.
Can I put, um, I got a one better judgment. Can I put Mr. Grinnells and or Ms. Harap on the spot and ask us a yes or no question? Either of you? Deb? I should be looking over here. I fail at that all the time. So, good question. And if you don't know the answer, that's fine too, just for my own edification. Are, are transient docks allowed under the LPP? Or is a dock this size, no matter how you do it, subject to a chapter ninety-one license? Or Mr. Eepo.
Dick's trying to, trying to.
Oh, Dr. Miller, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there. How are you?
That's okay. Um, Dick, uh, if I have this wrong, make some sign like, oh, wrong.
Okay, I can answer.
Yeah.
They, it doesn't matter, transient dock or, um, marina docks, uh, both require a chapter ninety-one license. We cannot. The local permitting program is only allowed for non-commercial use, uh, not commercial. However, what you could do is split off, and we've suggested that, split off the, uh, transient dock and get that started because that doesn't require the extra parking. That would give you the access to the water. And, and that's a, uh, you know, a process that you can go directly to, uh, what do you call it? DEP and conservation, lake management. You could start that tomorrow.
Right, be good, right, because you don't need the easement. Dick, that's because he doesn't need the easement for the additional spaces and he only need those spaces if he wants the marina docks, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So you, so you'd be able to, it looks like you'd be able to move right along without that.
Not heard of.
Ta-da. We're trying to stay in our lane, but those are the experts on docks, so that's why I wanted to ask. Thank you, Dr. Muller, Deb, and Mr. Grinnell. I appreciate it.
May I ask, would you ask one more question of, is it true that, um, I would be able to put ten transient docks in the water without DEP chapter ninety-one license?
Can, can you repeat that, please?
Yes or no? If, can he have, was it ten? Ten transient spots without a chapter ninety-one license?
No, that's not allowed per, per the, per the DEP and because it's commercial. It wouldn't matter if you had nine or eight.
But if it wasn't commercial, he could get away with it.
Right.
Not, that's the case, but so Joe somebody.
Commercial, it's explicit in, in what the, uh, DEP signed and the agreement with the town, so we cannot cross those boundaries into commercial with the local permitting program.
Very well. Thank you. Appreciate it. So at least you have some direction, maybe better news than, or some news.
I'd start on that tomorrow if that's the case. May as well.
Or Wednesday, depending on.
Well, depending on tomorrow.
Whatever your thing is, but at least we, and we can go from there.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
What do you have at six oh five?
Yeah. Six oh five, we're up, six twenty, we're up, ten seven o'clock. All right. A DPW grant application for Mass DOT small program. Turtle, Turtle Brook Cross, uh, Turtle, there's Turtle. Turtle Brook Crossing. Uh, Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moblen will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye.
Okay. South of Town and Granville Regional School BEA recognition ceremony is at the high school on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. I don't know my schedule. Mr. Fox, do you know your schedule?
Uh, I do not for that bit. I will, uh, we'll try to make it.
April thirteenth, it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, that's the comeback that week, so I can probably make that. Mr. Moblen, will you be around?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, one, one of the other things that is, that affects that is the board is need beyond its own work session to finish the budget. The week after your budget meeting next week, you're going to be having a discussion with the finance committee on finalizing the budget documents. So you would either be looking at Tuesday, the twelfth, or Wednesday, the thirteenth. So until you have that discussion about which one of those dates you want to use with the finance committee, you want to be hard pressed to give it away to another event.
Okay, thank you. Let me tell them, we'll come back to that. Proof three C D B G grant discharge of liens for twenty-nine Fred Jackson Road Project Housing Rehab.
In the amount of one hundred and seven dollars and two cents, just five to make that motion.
Doug Moblen will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, the, uh, the, the item before that, that's fine for the hundred and seven dollar. The other item up top, you have to authorize the chair to sign off on the discharge of those three liens. And they are in your folder.
Russ Fox will make the motion.
Doug Moblen will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye.
All right, up next, approve minimum wage adjustment for election workers and adjustments for assistant warden and warden position.
Fifty twenty-five. Uh, yeah, I, I have a family member that works the poll, so I, I'd like to abstain.
We're going to have to invoke the rule of necessity here, aren't we? My daughter worked the polls at an election or two.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I think we have to invoke the rule of necessity.
I think you're correct. I mean, it is full disclosure. It's keeping pace with minimum wage in Kamau, Massachusetts. So after invoking that rule of necessity.
Do you feel you benefit from that, Mr. Fox?
I don't see a dime of it, so.
Me neither.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
I, after invoking that rule, I will make the motion to approve.
I will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye. She'll be in school this year anyway. It'll be all good.
All right.
You never know.
You never know. Approved letter of understanding for the senior center recreational services director.
Uh, we, uh, I'll make that motion, but we did miss one, so.
Oh, that, yeah.
And that's, uh, uh, an understanding with the, uh, recreation service, senior center and recreation service, services director.
Yep.
Uh, Cindy Sullivan. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye.
Okay, approve annual town election warrants for five, ten, twenty-two town election at Town Hall Senior Center. You want to read them all off?
Uh, I mean, it's going to be Tuesday, the tenth of May, twenty twenty-two. Polls will be open from seven A M. to eight P M. for the purposes of selecting select board Dickinson School Committee Two. Uh, I don't know why they've got two there. Um, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Cemetery Commission, Constables Two, Community Preservation Two, Dickinson School Trustees, Library Trustees Two, Parking Rec, Planning Board, Housing Authority, and Water Commission. Only thing, I'm, I'm not sure that Dickinson, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. I apologize.
District School Committee.
School Committees, too. I apologize.
Yes, and gentlemen, as you know, that, uh, that election warrant also becomes what's called Article One on the annual town, uh, warrant.
Well, Russ Fox will make that motion. Doug Moblen will second the motion. All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox, huh?
Doug Moblen, aye.
Approve device pedaling and soliciting by law article under chapter sixty-three Town Code for ATM action.
Right, this was something you had asked for, um, last summer, uh, during issues with hawking and pedaling throughout the community where you wanted to institute uh, particular hours. So council did go and do that in the revision. And then what happened was in his cover letter, he also mentioned to you, you could have another uh, part of the bylaw, which would be a no-knock registry. And I think the board, uh, was not inclined to support that particular amendment. It carried this forward. So now is the time for you to decide whether that is in or does out. And if you're just going to go with the time changes that Mark Beglane put in, because this is going to become a warrant article on your annual town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
Mr. Fox?
Trying to remember the discussion we had. I guess it's been so long. Um, Carl, you need, you need to have an answer tonight, correct?
Uh, no, because there's a, uh, this is a warrant article draft you already had. So you just need to, um, and you'll be looking at any other warrant articles that come in by Friday for your meeting for next Monday. So you can, you can look at carrying this forward and make a decision on this next week. I believe Joe will be remote for that meeting. So just bear that in mind.
Yeah, that's fine. If we can get a copy of it so we can peruse it, because I was out of it there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did, I, I'm just trying to refresh my memory on the discussion that we've had of the incidents, the pros and cons, you know? Uh, so, read this over. I mean, I can always reach out to Chief Landis.
Yeah.
Our attorney Beglane again and, uh, just, just to refresh my memory. Doug, do you recall? I don't, okay.
No, I know it has something to do with the times. We were little people at eight o'clock at night knocking on the doors.
Right, I mean, we.
This was during COVID.
And that was during COVID, yeah.
We asked for people to abide by our wishes when they came in.
In absence of law at the time. And then I think we did have a discussion about having a registry and I don't know how, I don't remember.
Yeah, my, my recollection was Mark was just offering you to know there could be a registry. You didn't seem to be inclined to do that at that time. But your more important thing that you needed to amend the bylaw was to have reasonable hours where you didn't want people up too early or too late. So that's where the ten A M. to six P M. came from. And you also had, in an earlier town meeting, adopted the, um, fingerprints for certain types of licensing issues, of which hawkers and peddlers and solicitors and canvassers were added to that. So the other language you have in there also speaks to the issue of making sure that people coming into town go through this fingerprint process with the police department.
All right, now I read it, yeah.
When you want to sell flowers, you're gonna have to get fingerprints.
Door to door.
Well, still hawkers and peddlers.
True, yeah.
Yeah, I've had to do it for years for the Aceman truck, so. How time do you have to step up?
How time? Yeah. Based, now that he's refreshed my memory. Yeah, I think we did agree in principle to all these, we did, so I, I.
You did.
Do we have any discussion around having a effective do-not-call registry for hawkers and peddlers?
We did nothing with that.
Your, your initial, your initial inclination with, with Mark on that particular language was that you were not inclined to do that.
Very well.
Yeah.
So then this is, so that the, the second page of this document is the substance of the bylaw modification that we had discussed.
That is correct.
And that would go along with what we've already have done in the past.
Right, right, you've already instituted it more as a regulation, but, but the other thing you're gonna do is all, also, this will allow you to make sure that you can start doing the fingerprinting, too. We want to make sure that's included when we hand out this bylaw.
They'll make a motion. As a warrant.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Approved nomination of Zan Bennett as.
Who's Zan?
Yeah, that's, was Bennett as Inspector of Animals.
Russ Fox will make that, uh, motion.
Doug Moblen will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox.
Doug Moblen, aye.
And you, Bennett, you're doing a beautiful job over there. Okay, next, they have interest in land at three five six College Highway for cemetery expansion.
This was just something that was brought up informally during the budget negotiations. When we were talking about the, the future of the cemetery and, uh, the land they had available, it was just mentioned that this property adjacent or in between the old cemetery and new cemetery was going to be on the market, so I think it's just an F Y I. Something that we could, uh, see if the cemetery commissioners have any interest.
Yeah, I think the problem you're gonna run into there, too, is it's probably getting ready to go on the market, so if there is interest, I think you're gonna need to expedite that interest before it does go on the market.
Right.
I did walk in yesterday, yesterday with this one person from the cemetery commission.
Right.
The whole parcel. It, it, it's some, but. Mr. Goddard, tomorrow, when you have time, can you throw my desk or my, my cubicle? What address is this?
Three five six.
Three five six College Highway? Yeah, what I want you to do is, there's a barn there, too, can you just divide everything up and show me who owns what? You know, an aerial map? Yeah, I think Arnold has a barn in the middle of all that.
To, to the back.
Yeah.
Near the old King property.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
I think there's probably an easement.
Yeah, we need that, too.
Okay.
After looking, I mean, it'll help with the old cemetery for sure, and it, and it just gets to the new, but that barn is right there.
I used to hang tobacco in that barn years ago.
It looks it, hasn't been used since you walked away.
Yeah, it wasn't safe when I, when you were in it then.
But it is a decent parcel, there is, I think, almost five acres there. Oh, there you go, thank you. Yeah, see that barn? That, that would help us out a lot. But it is a fairly, a flat piece. I, you know, I envisioned the dog cemetery or the animal cemetery in the back there. You know, because everyone's looking to have somewhere to put their pets.
I, I just, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, to me, I think we should seriously look at it.
I think you have to.
Because it would tie everything together, I mean.
That's the barn?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a separate parcel.
It is, no, 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 it is, I'm just trying to figure out which Arnold we would have to go talk to or send Mr. Fox to talk, because he worked for him. What, I don't know what's it?
Well, I don't know if they own it, because they sometimes would lease.
Yeah.
Underst-. Barn says it's the Arnold, Ra- Arnold Robert E. Tobacco Corp.
Okay, that's, that's our Dave and John.
Oh, good, and Fred, okay. Interesting. But yeah, it's a pretty decent piece, I didn't see much wetness at all. Um, there's a little, you know, towards the end, there's a little spot there, but, uh, for the most part, it's got a ton of frontage. It's got two entrances.
Right, yeah, so. And that is our, part of our ancient burial grounds, so it is historical. That used to be the center of town, you know, at one time.
Really?
Right. Bugby, Bugby Road and in there.
Okay.
See, I told you that center keeps moving.
Jeez.
He's been around for two centers.
Yeah.
But was the center all the way down where Big Y is at one time?
That wasn't much of a center, we had a miniature golf.
No, 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 way, way back, was that actually considered the center of town? Way before Big Y was there, but I'm saying, I thought I had read that that was originally the center, and then it gradually, moving north.
You'd have to talk to Lee Hamburg, but I believe this was the main place, because this is where the meeting house burnt down, one of the original meeting houses burnt down. So, and that, i.e., that's why the cemetery is right there, because it was next to the church.
Right, but we were, we were talking during the master plan that, you know, one of the previous master plans had the center moving, and, you know, there have been more than one centers in town over the course of years, but.
Absolutely, interesting.
Well, I think it would tie everything together very well, you know? I definitely think it was tied up. Have to look at that.
Unfortunately, yes, you have to look at that.
Yeah.
But anyways, it's just for discussion.
I think the clock is ticking on your discussion.
Well, but it's a whole business, we can carry it as a topic for discussion.
Let's do that.
And, and charge the cemetery commission with. With that.
And we can informally reach out to the owners.
Um, I think that has already happened.
All right.
That's why I was, per my discussion yesterday with the cemetery commissioner, for one of those folks, I don't know what the titles are anymore.
Talk to Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's going on the market in X amount of weeks, but they would love to work with the town in the same.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, that family would like.
They'd love to see it come back, they said.
Right. Uh, if there's, you're right.
But I don't need to get into bidding war, because the way that the economy is right now, I'm hoping, right? That needs to get figured out sooner than later. You know what I mean?
Yep, absolutely.
Or tied up, whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
Contract for Hampshire and Hampden Canal Historic Documentation Project for fifteen thousand.
Yeah, this is something underway for a while with, uh, Lee and his group working with the historical people at the Regional Planning Agency PVC, so now they've got a, a, a group of communities put together and is gonna allow that Hampshire and Hampden Canal Historic Documentation Project to, to take place. And the historical committee does have funds that were earmarked under the New York, New Haven Canal line item in our budget, so we do have these funds that have been in place for projects such as this. So the board needs to authorize the chair to sign this contract for the service. And of course, we're going to be one of many communities, including Russell, Southampton, Cities of East Hampton, North Hampton, and Westfield. So this is part of a larger geographical project we are participating in on a historical project.
Okay, I need a motion.
Uh, Russ Fox will make that motion to have the chair sign.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Rescind our three-day, our three one-day liquor licenses for Edgewood. I believe that she's had her back from the A B C C, right?
Right. So, and he's recommending that, and he's talked to
Yes.
Uh, the mayor of Edgewood, explain the situation to him. And everyone is in agreement that this is the right thing to do, so Russ Fox will make the motion to rescind the three, three one-day license, liquor licenses for Edgewood that we had granted, I think, last week.
Doug Moblen, second the motion ever sent.
All those in favor, Joe DDI, Russ Fox.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Discuss photographs for the A T R twenty twenty-one.
I just kind of wanted to make an announcement that if anybody had photographs from the parade to send them to my email address, because we're thinking about that being the cover.
Got a million photos. So if anyone has any pictures from the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary parade that look pretty good, please send them to.
Arsolic at Southwood M A dot net.
And we will take a look at them through our, uh, town, town warrant book, what is it?
Town report.
Town report.
Annual town report.
There you go. You're welcome. Thank you. Did you get a chance to reach out to David?
Not yet, I have his name.
Okay, I was gonna.
He was the official photographer for two fifty.
Yeah, he's got a lot of pictures.
Diane, too, I think sometimes you post some nice pictures, too, maybe you could even.
Yeah, but I don't need nip bottles.
I'm not even, yeah, no.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, we are, we're giving out the, you know, and I'm joking, of course.
I could use other ones, though, to fill in pages, so it's like, I think maybe you had some of Eagles and I would love to have a few, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Okay, so that's what I see there, new business. Budget work session dates.
Right, we have, we're gonna be looking at one for next week.
Yeah.
The town accountant and her staff are finishing the version with the FinCom this week, and we're looking at next Wednesday on the sixth for yours, so we'll be doing an agenda in a, um, a Zoom reservation for all that.
Okay.
So just make sure you have that on your schedule wherever you all might be.
Yes, I'll be able to log in.
Me, too.
Oh, okay. Show you any pictures.
So, so now that that date has been set the week after, um, fits into, that's, you have a meeting on the eleventh of April, your regular board meeting. So what would you prefer as a work session date with the finance committee? Tuesday, the twelfth, or Wednesday, the thirteenth?
Tuesday, the twelfth is better for me.
Mr. Moblen?
Good, because I can't miss Ragga Ball two weeks in a row. I'll get even that. April, my daughter's birthday.
She's not here.
Correct, oh, thanks, I tried, right?
Yeah.
Eh, looks like it worked.
Tuesdays, okay?
Yeah.
Tuesdays, fine, Tuesday, Tuesday it is, Carl.
Okay.
You gotta check with them, right, no, it's just us?
Uh, no, we, we, we'll, we'll also have to inform the chairman of the thing.
Thank you. Okay. Um, anything else from new business?
Uh, I will be having a regional, Westfield Regional Public Safety Communication Center Executive Board meeting.
Yep.
This Wednesday afternoon with the, uh, the mayor and the and the fire chiefs and police chiefs of both, uh, communities, so that's gonna be Wednesday afternoon.
We got the mayor up to speed the other day, so hopefully that works out. He's done his homework and will be able to, to keep up.
Okay.
Yeah. Is it all you have for new business?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fox?
I'll say.
Mr. Moblen?
I've set it up tonight.
All right, so what I have, and I'm gonna put on a new business, I've been contacted from some of the liquor establishments in town. In regards to, in the years passed with COVID, we had the tent scenario to expand their seating capacity, right? We've done.
Restaurants.
Restaurants.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, restaurants slash bars.
Yep.
Um, so that, that, um, one of them reached out today and asked if they can still do that. And I wasn't sure, only because the seating hasn't, right, the seating is back to normal. It's not.
Yes, but I believe that there was action at the state level to extend this.
I believe it is.
But I believe I read an article about it.
Okay, so you want to swing your charge of it again, and I'll deal with it?
Second.
Right, just, just so, if it's legal, I have no problem.
Right.
I, I think during, maybe the interesting thing from this, all right, I have said too much, but I'll continue. Brevity is not my strong suit, but I think what the, what, what some of the restaurants were able to do during COVID was downright amazing. I think what that town and government actually did, we actually were pretty nimble for a change and, and able to enable this activity, and some of it's gonna become permanent. To-go cocktails with sealed and all that other stuff, that's gonna be a thing forever, I think. But the only thing that, the only caveat we need to put around it is, in my opinion, is if we continue to allow outdoor, and it's gonna become impactful to another board's decision around permitting parking, for example. So before, it's not an issue, and I, I'm, pick on a restaurant, pick, pick a winner, they have thirty spots. They have twenty tables, and they have capacity for X, their parking was based on that. Now you go put a tent in the parking lot, you reduce the parking, but now, and now COVID, and when, during COVID, no big deal. Inside's empty, everybody's coming and going, but if you have the outside, it's great. Now you're back to regular capacity inside and outside, and you may cause, you, you just gotta figure that in. If it's even allowed for us to figure in under the bylaw. Again, I, I, I talked earlier tonight, and this phases right into that, stay in our lane, right? As the, as the licensing authority, we, we review a site plan, whether it's used cars or cars or even liquor establishments, we go off the planning board's decision-making process around that, and then we do our part. So I want to make sure that we just do the same thing here. If there's other factors at play, that we just be cognizant of those, and we don't run roughshod over another order commission. But I think it's a great idea, and I think if, if they can, if they want to continue to do it, and they can, they can continue to do it, I think it's great. I really do.
Especially if the state's working on legislation, or the governor is, is gonna give an executive order that they can continue to do it.
Right, and there, there's been, it's been the talk of the news the last week or so, because, um, there's been some, well, the weather breaking a little bit, not, not that you can tell by outside right now, but in Boston.
Did you see that?
The mayor decided that they wanted to try to get a seventy-five-hundred-dollar fee out of the North End restaurants only because of, they were gonna do some, they, they had a good explanation for it, but it doesn't pass the stiff test, right? So we're not looking to do that, and we did, you know, we want to just enable it if it's possible, as long as it doesn't cause a hazard on the streets or whatever for, because now there's no parking, and people are parking where they shouldn't be parking and everywhere else. But other than that, I think it's a great idea.
I think that would be easy enough for Joe to ascertain, because if he speaks with the police chief, he can speak to A B C C, and, and they'll know and have the most up-to-date rules that are authorized by the legislature.
All right, I'll deal with it tomorrow. Thank you. And the only other thing, Carl, that's not new business, is can you please reach out to the CPC and see where we stand? Because we're, we're against the wall on this whole roof project and getting us back in front of them for a decision.
Okay.
I know you've done it already last week, but tell them they don't want me to call them. They'd be much kinder. Which is okay. All right, old business, Carl, what do you have from old business?
Uh, let's see.
Do the list first.
Uh, under the, uh, well, bottom there, the cable TV renewal and ascertainment, you know, I believe town council's looking at a, um, a hearing sometime in June. We did receive in the mail late last week, the filing fee and all the binders. So we've provided a binder to the committee, so that'll be important for Paul to share with, with, uh, Mr. Bestin and any of the other, uh, members on his board. And now the, um, the clock is ticking, because that renewal dated, uh, for that license is in September. Okay?
For Springfield.
Yes, it did. All right, so first we have North Pond Violation Waiting for Fish and Game Agreement Development, I know that's in the process. Town Hall Roof Design, that's also in the process.
Yep, that's out to bid, that has been advertised, it's, it's central register, newspapers, uh, Randy's staff put it in the compice for us, so that's coming along well.
All right. CPC funding application status for Town Hall Roof, I just discussed it. Sewer system IMA with City of Westfield, that's in the works. Boarding committee procedure to notify and appoint members, dealt with that tonight. The STM and ATM warrant articles due April first. Review or revise local bills and objectives, we've already done that. So you can probably take that off for a couple of months and then put that back on, Carl.
All right.
Okay.
Fire chief recruitment process, we took
Deputy.
Deputy, should be chief. Right, should be deputy now.
Okay, um, I've started that.
The job description for Assistant CAO position. Have you guys perused that? I believe that is done, right?
You, you have a draft version that was given to you several weeks ago. So, um, I think, I think Labor Council and myself are waiting for you to give your inputs on if you want to fine tune it.
All right, next week. Carl, we'll fine tune that next week and get, get some
Yeah. Cable TV we discussed. Anything else for old business?
Well, under old business, we sponsored the Historical Society, uh, to do their, uh, program on the four-hundredth anniversary of the Pilgrims.
Yep.
How was it?
It was excellent, excellent.
They brush you up? Pat, no. Pat Orion, uh, did the presentation.
She's good.
Uh, she did it in here with, using the screen and the, uh, they mic'd her up.
Oh, nice.
So she could walk around and, uh, didn't have to hold on to the mic. And, uh, Jim Middleton, uh, came down and set up that, uh. I took care of all the doors and lights. I found out how to turn on the lights and how to unlock the words next. So I'm an expert. But, uh, it was a very good program. Uh, we're very fortunate. I think they have, uh, Historical Society so active.
Yeah.
You are. It's, uh, it's a great group.
All right. Anything for you for old business?
Not nearly as exciting as the weekend that Mr. No, I'm good.
All right. So that's going to conclude this evening. Other than, we are going to go on executive session, correct, Carl?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and not to reconvene. All right, a motion to go on executive session for Chapter MGL, Chapter C thirty A, S twenty-one, two and thirty, and Chapter two, one, four, Section one B. Uh, exemption two, move to go on executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Move to go on executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. Exemption number three. Move to go on executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining that the chair moves to go on executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Move to go on executive session, excuse me, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. A person shall have the right against unreasonable substantial and serious interference with their privacy. The superior clerk shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in the connection within damages. Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moban, aye.